Welcome to the select board meeting for Monday.
February 26th, we call to order at 6:33 PM. Review of asbestos removal professional services proposal wastewater department historical building and fire station two.
So I believe both of you have a copy of a proposal from Strategic.
Mm-hmm.
That is a proposal that Pete was able to obtain for the wastewater department. And that is for the asbestos pipe removal. This is not an engineering professional services agreement. This is for a company that will actually do the removal from the site, the containment units, the bill of lading, disposal, and then all the necessary paperwork. And I think Pete and I have checked in, obviously can answer directly, but we believe that because this is exterior stored material, that the, the need for an additional professional to oversee the process may not be as necessary, that this is relatively straightforward work.
So we would just need to furnish an staff onsite for the time they have?
Correct.
Mostly inferred, but that's not just transport and everything, that includes the cost of disposal.
May I ask Pete to follow up on that, and that's the confirmation we received?
Yes.
Okay.
It includes everything, bill of landing, the transportation of it, disposal, file of the reports and paperwork with EEP and EPA.
Okay.
Doesn't say how long they expect. One, one day?
My understanding is this is a one day collection.
From what I understood, yes.
In and out, in and out in the same day?
Right. So probably from contracting through the work and the closeout a few weeks to have the whole issue.
Yeah, I was just thinking about the onsite, you know, staff member, how long are we tying somebody up to be there?
Right.
But if it's just a, you know, a few hours of the one day actually onsite to put down the mill plastic and actually pick it up and get it out of there, it's not.
Right.
It's not overbearing as far as number of hours. Okay.
Funds from?
You have a special article that was approved at the annual town meeting for last year.
Which was in excess of that.
It was $20,000, if I remember correctly?
Yes.
Yes.
Questions or concerns on that one?
No, I don't have any on that one. Want a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion to award the contract for asbestos pipe removal to Strategic Environmental Services, 362 Putnam Hill Road Sutton, Mass. 01590 in the amount of $9,600, or $565 and authorize Pete Sanders to sign any and all contracts needed.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Connect tomorrow and we'll get the prevailing wage schedule over to them and we'll get the door. Thank you, sir.
And then Atlas for the other two.
Yep. See, this is that Atlas quote we had for fire station two in the historic building. And this is not to do the abatement work, they're going to help us put together a scope of work so I can go out to collect quotes for the work that need to be done at both sites, and they're going to help give us a opinion of probable cost so that we can do the budgeting work. And because both of these are interior spaces, the fire station obviously has staff working out of it daily. I do think we would benefit from a professional to help us oversee that scope of work.
So $1,500 for the design services and then $850 a day if we engage them for remediation oversight?
Correct.
After, once we have a contractor and award?
Correct.
Okay. But not obligated to have Atlas be onsite and being the oversight? That was, I was trying to look at this.
If we need that, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, if, if, we may feel that way, but if we have the contractor scheduled to come and say it's going to be a day at the historic building and we feel like that's straightforward, then we don't need to worry about it. But we may want oversight there to double check and make sure everything's done the way you want it. At the fire station, we believe it's all exposed, there may be some buried under carpets, so we need to understand that. But that may change the scope of that work. And again, you may want a professional to be onsite for part of that removal to make sure things are done to your specification. Or we may just have the, the staff work at a different location for the duration of the project until we, we have that finalized.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns?
No, at this point, it's just the 1,500 and then if we happen to call them up for any other additional material, per day cost.
Yeah, right.
No. It's the same one we saw before.
Yep. Make a motion to engage Atlas 73 William Franks Drive, West Springfield, Mass. 01089 for hazardous material consultation services proposal for Irving Fire Station Two and Old Firehouse Museum Projects. Atlas proposal number 23-13691 in the amount of $1,500. And to authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to sign any and all documents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Review meeting minutes from January 29th, 2024.
I have no concerns, I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes from January 29th, 2024, as written.
I will second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that was the only one we had, right?
Yeah.
Pass over the other two. Review and potential appointment of cultural council vacancy letter of interest, Catherine Glennon.
I'll say it every time, I'm very happy to see when people are volunteering.
I agree.
Give me one second to get back to my... I have no concerns with it. I'll make a motion to appoint Catherine Glennon as a member of the cultural council effective February 26th, 2024 with a term ending June 30th, 2026.
I'll second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Review and appointment to council of aging vacancy letter of interest, Leo Parent Jr. Any concerns?
No concerns.
Make a motion to appoint Leo Parent Jr. as a member of the cultural council. As a member of the council on aging effective February 26th, 2024 with a term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good catch.
Knew what it was.
Mm-hmm.
Review and issuance of the 10th water commitment. Make a motion we approve the 10th water commitment in the amount of
Eighty-six or nine?
Eighty-six dollars and nine cents for final charges.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion regarding the former IP Mill RFP, questions for addenda?
So really, the, the main question that we wanted to pose to you all, we've had a few interested, potential developers visit the site or reach out with questions, we've held a few optional site visits. And one question that has arisen is to whether the town would be interested in making the parcel about an acre and a half across the street from the IP Mill available as part of this RFP. That parcel was taken as part of the, the tax taking for the IP Mill, so it is a parcel that was associated with the mill. It served as a parking lot, I believe. So we have informed any of those interested developers that we were bringing that question to the select board and if you all made that decision, we would include an update in the future addenda.
As far as I know, we haven't had any use for that portion of it.
Not that I know of.
I think the interest in that one is its proximity to the, to the rail line, correct?
Correct, we've had some conversations or some questions about whether or not a rail spur would be potentially available?
It opens up, you know, more potential uses.
Correct.
Okay.
My other thought was we could always revisit it in 15 minutes and see if they have any thoughts either with our joint meeting, because I don't know of anything either, but I know we've all been talking about it for a while, so.
Yeah, we can hold off on it and bring it up in the, at the end of the, the budget.
Yeah, 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 not in 15 minutes, but after, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we table, I mean, no concerns at the moment, but.
Okay.
And then you mentioned the timeline too, which we can.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we may want to push it out for our own sake.
Yeah, I was gonna say, not for, not for the
Developers.
Developers sake, but for our own, to be able to make sure that we can give it.
Right, sure.
You know, enough time, okay.
Okay. Review of health and safety plan policy, use of town provided vehicles and equipment, excavation and trenching, first read?
I had nothing on first read, but I didn't go through it, you know.
Same.
We'll bring them back next meeting?
Yeah, that was, that was two separate policies, just for clarity.
Second read next meeting?
Yes, please.
Excellent.
Review surplus equipment request recreation?
Well, that one says recreation, it should have said library, my apologies.
Well, surplus equipment request.
It's a surpluser. So the library provided a list of the items that they have available and recommended disposition?
The only thing that I have note in there that I don't know, do you know if the library director reached out to the school related to the music program?
Good question.
Just an acoustic guitar, I figured.
Yep.
That piece alone, maybe that one item.
Okay.
Before, we deem it a surplus.
Yeah.
I would say, you know, internally, they can transfer it to another department.
Absolutely.
Without.
Correct.
Yeah.
We can absolutely follow up with the school about that.
Can you also check on the computers, I don't know of any Dells that they had to get rid of, and we haven't done anything in terms of wiping equipment?
I can get you a little bit more information on those three?
That would be great. I think there's some HPs, but I don't know about those. All the Dells are new. That I know of, so.
Yep.
There's one, but it's at town hall, it needs to go on the list, but it's not yet.
You want to bring this back then, after you get the questions answered about those two pieces?
Next meeting. Or as soon as we have that information, if later.
Absolutely.
Okay. Review of the Bridge Street and Maple Avenue procurement recommendation. Come on up, sir. This has been a long one in the works.
What's that?
It's been a long one that we've been working on.
Three years?
At least.
Math error, alright, yeah, I gotta decipher this thing. Well, a few notes on this.
Yes. So.
The errors and all of that, like, what is that in context of the schedule, like, should we be worried?
No, the base bid numbers that are presented have been verified by Weston Sampson, they've gone through page by page of all the submissions of the, the lowest three. And where there was a math error, they've made a note of that, so they're, they're just bringing your attention that there is correction and they provided all those sub-pages as you've seen where that is. So the, the base bid numbers are correct.
The tables are corrected.
Correct.
The math errors reference what they found, but this is the correct total.
Correct, that is correct.
Just wanted to make sure I was following it.
Yep.
Questions, comments, concerns?
In the, in the lowest bid, just that the mobilization, it's interesting that in their own language says not to exceed 5%, but we have a notation saying that it does. Does that, according to Weston Sampson, doesn't negate anything?
No.
Okay.
So it's noted, but we, they didn't reduce it, and it is what it is?
Yeah, and they weren't the lowest bidder anyways, so.
Yep.
Okay.
And just for greater context, this talks about the lowest three, but just for your knowledge, there was eight total vendors who submitted bids.
Yeah, it's the next page, gives us all eight of them.
Yep. Any other questions, concerns? Any concerns from what you saw?
None at all, we had a great working relationship and product from the last time we used this vendor.
What did they do last for us?
They did the sidewalk project, it was Pratt.
Yeah, that was.
Pratt Street.
Gun.
Gun Street.
Amadon Pratt Gun.
Okay.
All around the central, Central Street, Park Street.
Yeah.
It was actually the contract that helped us out after that big flood up on Poplar Mountain, that culvert that go also.
Okay, got it.
No, I, I have zero concerns.
Yeah, good company.
Okay.
They've been responsive to us.
Good?
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Alright, then I make a motion that we award a contract to Abe Martins and Sons Construction Inc. of Ludlow, Mass. For the Bridge Street wall replacement Maple Avenue roadway improvement project in the amount of $707,000 and $810 for the base bid of the project. Do you need to break down on three schedules?
No.
No, okay.
And authorize?
Oh yeah, thank you, and authorize Town Administrator Brian Smith to sign and execute all documents needed.
Thank you.
I'll second that. What did we have budgeted?
So on the POTW number three portion, you had 55, so we're under budget there. For the other two, you have about $700,000 in the appropriation, plus we have chapter 90 and we have a $52,000 Mass DOT grant. So well in excess of what's been appropriated.
Excellent.
Yep.
Thank you.
Are we gonna spend, we haven't voted yet. Are we gonna spend down the, the chapter, like, what's the, the plan in terms of spending that down, we're gonna do the grant first, obviously?
Correct.
We're gonna use the.
And then.
We're gonna use the appropriation.
Appropriation and then keep the chapter 90, because we're not at the last year, it hasn't been building up, this is like year one, right?
We're almost there, we're the three years.
Year three, we're year three.
So we have one more year?
So they're, they're gonna be looking for a plan for chapter 90 money.
Right.
Soon.
In the next year.
Correct.
Can't recall, probably off the, okay, alright, good enough. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I hope so.
We can meet later this week and get going? Thank you, sir.
Review and approval of the Upper Pioneer Valley Veteran Services District MOA.
So hopefully it's straightforward?
Yep, I was looking at it.
They're just looking for a two-year extension of our existing agreement? No change to services or the structure of the, of the existing MOA?
I have no concerns with it.
Same.
Make a motion for the town of Irving to remain a member of the Upper Pioneer Valley Veteran Services District by renewing the existing inter-municipal agreement effective July 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2026 and to authorize Jacob Smith, Select Board Chair, to execute all necessary agreements.
I will second, all those in favor?
Aye. And that is on the clipboard next to you.
With the water commitment here?
Yep, it's the document underneath.
Thank you. Alright, with that, we will.
Take a five minute?
We will, yeah, we'll pause for five minutes and then begin the joint meeting at seven.
I'm not gonna formally recess, we'll just.
Yeah, it's fine.
Those here for the joint meeting, we're just gonna pause until seven, so if you want to come up and grab your seats, you're welcome to.
Otis? Do you want that shut down?
I.
You know, just because it's brand new, it used to just be an assessment and we would get the amount and pay the bill. And this was the first time we've had to, you know, watch the Board of Health sort of look at this and follow all the pieces of it. So just keeping that in mind.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Senior Services. That is you. Come on up, Paula.
Jeff, do you want this? Okay. I have to get glasses. Do you want me to just start?
Go for it whenever you're ready.
I know. Here we go. First of all, I've put down my goals, but goals always change. Okay? So our goal was to get serve safe here or have serve safe. That was one of the goals. I don't know if I wrote it down originally, but we do now. And serve safe, myself, Becky, and Dulce will be getting that. And that will start bringing in lunches. We hope just two days a week, maybe three, not sure yet. Okay? And we're just waiting on a person to submit that course to us. And that is from ForCog. Randy, Randy Crozier is going to do it. And if he's listening, I hope he's gonna call me back. So anyway, let me see, what else?
Nothing?
Okay. Then also, we have Dulce now that has joined our staff and she is gonna start bringing more programs to light. We've had some conversations and our calendars are starting to really fill up with all kinds of things. I can go through some of them if you'd like, but right now I just want to tell you that, you know, between even in March, we have all kinds of stuff planned in March. Unfortunately, we're spring, I mean, we're Easter and we're St. Patrick's Day, so we're kind of a little crazy. Here's St. Patrick's, out there Easter. So we're gonna be ready for both and we're serving lunches for both. We have coffee with cops. Anything on there is happening and it changes and we're stronger than ever. We're averaging 50 to 60 people per day. We have the fitness room almost packed in the morning and by nine or 10 o'clock, they're all done. Our programs are extremely busy, averaging, again, some days, this whole room is not big enough for some of our programs, but I'm not asking for an addition yet. And let me see. Overall, it's just bringing in new people, always offering new programs, and be welcoming. Do you want, can I go on my budget now or I know you're thinking something, right?
Go ahead, go ahead under your budget and then we'll follow the question.
This is my nature, so you just have to get used to me. And I know you are. So I just want to let you know that I have a level funded. And if you'll see some changes in here on my budget, like electricity minus 500, professional contracting services minus 1,500, and then you'll see buildings maintenance supply minus 2,000, and then you'll see a plus of purchased supplies. That's all I did is shifted some of the accounts around so that it's still level funded, but took some out and put some in because overall, when you look at the accounts that we always used, they always were above and beyond. So I'd rather correct it. And that's what I did this time. I believe that if you see our electricity, we took out 500. I believe that we're even going to be in a better situation ever since we've gotten that improvement that's gonna happen.
You mean on the, on the supply?
Yeah, the supply.
Have you already seen the reductions?
That will make a difference. But I also can tell you that, where is it now? You know, you think you're so ready and then you're not. For example, just to give you an idea, because our electric bill is always so expensive here and I keep it to 72 no matter what. Well, let's just say that sometimes I have to up it when I get a complaint. And anyway, in January last year, we did $3,919. Maybe it was colder out. This year, we did 2,089. So that's a difference of $1,800. So just having that is gonna make a difference when we end up with the budget year.
So for all of the sites, we locked in a new supply for the next three years?
Yes.
Which is about 20 cents a kilowatt hour?
Correct.
Less than what we were paying last year?
Mm-hmm.
So that should impact all of the town buildings?
Thank you.
Plus, maybe it's because I lowered, because everybody complained, so I lower the heat just, no, never mind. Okay, you know, you gotta have a little levity at a budget meeting, okay? So let me see.
With you here, we've got plenty.
Pardon?
With you here, there's always plenty.
You gotta be positive.
We're used to you by now. If we're not, we're all in trouble.
You know what I mean? So what else can I tell you?
I was just gonna mention electrical cables, yes. You asked if they're seeing it. I talked to Chief Wonka the same thing.
Just didn't see it?
Yeah, significantly. We looked at it when I was there the other day. So thank you to Treasurer Jennifer for bringing that to us. And I mean, we're seeing it quickly. So even if it's not the greatest over the summer, I think net wise, we're gonna see a still significant saving.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely, we will. There's also, you know, different things that we're, we are working on, like, for example, there's fire and safety. And I showed you that, Brian. They sent us a quote. I didn't like the quote. I thought that it was ridiculously higher than it was last year. So I called the guy up. I had him speechless by the time we were done. And he's gonna re-quote me. Because, you know, how do you go $100 for an item that's 40 cents? So anyway, that's gonna happen. I'm, Thomas, okay. Well, I, I look at everything in detail to make sure that we're getting the most for our money here.
That is true.
It's important. We appreciate it. We laugh, but we appreciate it, really, we do.
Okay. So I don't know, is there anything on the budget that you are perplexed about?
Do we have questions?
I'm good.
Purchase services.
Purchase services?
We, you know, a couple of years ago, we didn't spend close to it and you are upping it. So just curious where that's going.
Okay, purchase services is that, that line item is pretty much for all instructors. And I went up a little bit because I want to cover if by chance, and I wasn't sure if we were gonna get an increase this year. We, we haven't done any kind of raises for our instructors. So I wasn't sure if they were gonna come back and ask for them in 2024. And so far, they haven't because they love working here so much. So the other thing is we, where else is it? Purchase services, exception of, and then we're also getting a raise in the formula grant this year, too. Every year, it's $6,000. This year's gonna be $8,000. So that is gonna cover even more, more instruction. And then also, let me see, what else? $1,000 more for increase or additional services. Okay, I took the increase, what I did is I put the increase in here and deducted it from the other lines because this is the one, if you look what we spent, it was, I was getting a little nervous that we might not be able to cover it. So I kind of like moved it in there, but I didn't really increase it. Just move the line. Well, you know, right? That's legal.
Yes, Paula, it's legal.
It's level funded.
Well, depends.
No, it really is.
And that's not for, I'm not saying this for you, specifically for you, but, but there's been the background conversation about what's level funded because there is an increase because the wages went up. So what's level funded mean? And we haven't talked about that. But just to, just to say, level funded on expenses, it's not level funded overall. So, and there are adjustments not made yet from last year. So the numbers aren't, it's not specifically about you.
Across the board.
It's across the board. So those increased numbers are artificially higher, but we haven't still haven't kind of revisited it. More of a statement, not a question for you.
Well, I also gave back $5,000 that I was gonna have in it. That I gave back when everyone asked us to give back because it was gonna give us an opportunity to have even more programs that other sources wouldn't have to pay.
Oh, you're talking about last year?
Yeah.
Or the year we're in. I got you.
I know, but I'm still want the $5,000.
It doesn't look like it'd be much easier this year. Any other questions for Senior Services? Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
For the budget and the entertainment, as always.
Gary's waiting for me, watching me on TV, see? Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. You know, I just like to have fun when it comes to this.
It's refreshing. Next up, Board of Library Trustees and Public Library.
Could I have the record show that as a trustee, I'm recusing myself from the discussions? We do not have a trustee meeting posted.
You're recusing as a trustee, only? Okay.
Well, I'm refusing myself from the finance for discussing it.
Okay.
So it's not in parents and conflict of any kind.
That's fine. Just wanted to make sure I was clear.
That's, did you capture that? 7:25?
Welcome. What's that? You looking for the shot clock?
Tell you, we should go to the library. The TV's right there. It's behind Brian's head. Countdown starts now. Go!
Welcome.
Thank you for having me here. I'm really pleased to be able to present the library's FY25 budget to you all. I'm assuming that most of the people at these tables are familiar with the information in this report. But I'm gonna provide some highlights because I know that the community sometimes watches this recording and they don't always have access to the written documents in a way that's really accessible for them. So it sounds like you'd like to hear our goals first?
Whichever way you'd like to approach it.
All right. So the library has an FY25 operating budget that is supported by our FY24 narrative. And we also have one capital request that is on the table for presentation tonight. Our current FY25 goals and initiatives include to increase staffing capacity to meet our patron needs, specifically in youth services. To pursue increased collaboration with other town departments, boards, commissions, and local schools, especially if the youth services position is increased, our relationship with the schools will also increase. We would like to continue helping patrons to use digital resources by providing quick start guides and more in-person training. We're going to make further headway documenting the building use practices and boosting access to meeting rooms for the Irving community. And we're going to seek and utilize further grant funding for budget areas that are not increased by the town budget, like programs and services. Some things I'd like to share about the past year is that the library obtained LEED certification, which was a goal for the town, and the town received $100,000 credit based on that completion. We filed a post occupancy report with the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Over 100 programs were offered to patrons of all ages. We were awarded over $32,000 in grant funding by external sources. Our patron traffic was up 100%. We had 4,000 people come in in the prior year and 8,000 people come in this past year. And in the past five months, the average has gone up to 1,000 patrons per month. And that's in 30 hours per week with one full-time staff and two 28-hour a week staff members. The Hours Pilot was concluded at the end of 2023, so new hours for the library, our Sunday and Monday, 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., and Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 12 to 6. We have partnered with the Senior and Community Center, Conservation Commission, Recreation Commission, Historical Commission, and the Planning Department on our activities this year. I would also like to highlight that almost half of our item circulations are for the teen and youth juvenile collections, which really speaks highly to the needs of our community and the quality of our library materials. Our challenges include keeping up with those circulations and patron traffic. Two of the three library staff only work four days a week out of the five that we offer service, which means they only work 28 hours. And we are required to have two staff in the building at all times for safety and services continuity. So that means if, two days a week, if we lose a staff member that day, we have to close the library, which is really unfortunate. Our materials budget rises with, is required by the MBLC to rise every year to keep up with costs. So while we are seeing a level funded budget proposal, the wages go up every year due to step wages. So even if we request no further money from the town and the taxpayers, we still need to account for that in order to stay certified. So there will be an amount on this budget that you'll see that is in the materials budget as an increase in order to maintain certification. And I'm happy to answer any further questions about that. Our other challenges include things like door maintenance. It takes a lot to keep up with the alarm system and the lock system and the hardware. Financing programs continue to be a rising cost. An average program can cost anywhere from $200 to $500, depending on the quality of the program or the level of service. And as you'll hear in my capital request, the lighting system continues to elude us in terms of the controls and we need to have that addressed. And I just wanted to finalize my little piece here. In talking with the Chair of the Board of Library Trustees, there seemed a few points salient to reiterate that are not necessarily part of that report. When the library was built, that's this new library that is literally 10 times the size of the previous library, so my congratulations to the town for completing such an amazing project. The intention was to see an increase in usage and patron traffic and an increase in demand for library services. That goal has been reached and continues to grow. Staffing levels must meet a certain minimum for the continuity of service and for everyone's safety. And the library is one of the very few services in town where a taxpayer and Irving citizens of any age can use the service five days a week as much as they choose with no adjustment based on their financial contributions. And we even have services that they can use outside of library hours, online, streaming or downloading or accessing eBooks and such. So we encourage the community to think of the essential services offered by the library, a place where people can access information, use computers, the internet, do their taxes, make important photocopies, and look for assistance in whatever way they need. And I will leave you with three final statistics. In 2022, 18,000 items were borrowed from the library. In 2023, we are up to almost 20,000. In 2022, the librarians answered 500 reference questions. And in 2023, they answered 2,000. And in 2022, we had 6,226 building visitors. And in 2023, we had 11,167. So thank you for your time and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions?
That seems like a large increase in terms of pedestrian traffic and people taking books and whatever else anybody does in the library. There's a variety of things, obviously.
Yeah.
I don't understand how the staff is adequate to be able to continue to maintain that if, if the number of visitors continues to increase.
Our days are rigorous. And that's why you'll see the only thing that we have asked the town to consider, that we've proposed, if there is any opportunity for something other than a level funded budget, if we're considering level services, if we can increase the youth services librarian to one extra day per week, from 28 to 35 hours, that will really help us keep up with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your question.
What is the minimum staffing level?
Two staff.
So does that mean, I mean, help me with the math. So we have three staff to work four days a week. We're open five and you work five days a week, right? So that seems like we have extra person at least three of those days?
So three of those days, we are lucky to have three staff to keep up with the level of service that we're providing.
I guess I'm just trying to balance that with the narrative, which was if one's out, you have to close?
On Sunday and Tuesday, we only have two people.
So that's the scheduling that there's, I, I, okay, got it. Got it.
Okay. Sometimes I have to wrap my head around it, too. And subs are hard to retain. We do have a sub budget. And that has been great, but often our subs go onto full-time jobs. So currently, we only have one sub. And we're in the process of hiring more.
Other questions? I had one on the significant budget changes, the reference to town accounting changes, changed salary and wages. What does that mean?
That means that it...
The breakout, is that what?
Yeah. I was confused about the breakout when I was writing that. And Brian since met with me to clarify how the accounting was being done because we have the longevity, holiday pay, vacation leave, sick leave, breakment leave, et cetera, added to our budget. The math wasn't totally clear to me at that time.
Okay.
So.
So it's not?
So I feel like it looks like it adds more than it does.
Okay.
In that final column.
Got it, because of the shift?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The 29,000 was throwing me off. That's why I was wondering.
Yeah, so, Brian, I don't think we made an adjustment for the select board on this since we did the math.
In the, you're like, I can't speak.
In the narrative.
In the narrative.
Yeah. So I can clarify that the salary increase due to step wages in the FY25 budget for the library will be $5,000, $5,048.
Okay, got it.
The proposed salary increase for the youth services librarian is 10,217. So the total increase proposed is 16,353.
Okay, so close to what's in the detail.
Yeah, so the...
The 29 was throwing me off, but that's really only about five.
Yeah, so I would refer to the
That's fine.
Detail report and not the narrative on that matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect, makes sense.
Would you like me to discuss the capital issue here?
Yes, sure. Well, I think there's probably a question on whether it is capital, but...
Yeah, I was gonna say, it doesn't meet the threshold.
I don't think it meets the threshold, but...
Yeah, I was gonna question whether or not we, you know, there should be a line. I know other budgets have a small line of a few thousand dollars that they can take on these smaller projects that don't meet the threshold.
So I think the town buildings account that Glenn and I oversee may be able to be used to help assist the library with this project because it's about $3,000.
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna say that's usually kind of the catch-all for all the
All those smaller things that pop up in town buildings.
My entire building maintenance budget is $3,000. So that's one of the reasons why this rose to a capital project for the library. Also because it didn't seem like the process for the regular building maintenance was adequate for addressing the problem.
So capital, I believe, has to be 5,000 or five years. So that's why it didn't meet that criteria. And the individual building maintenance versus the overall town building maintenance account, so that's the, you know, it's a big difference in the way those are allocated. So...
As long as the lighting system gets addressed, I don't really care where it comes from.
Yeah, I mean, I have more concerns about why it's there now because, but I don't know that people who were here when it was done, who could speak to what was and wasn't done are still here. So that, that's challenging, but I don't quite understand how it's not, how we have the issue and it's not a responsibility of someone who oversaw the project as opposed to the town unless we failed to do something along the way to actually have access or use. And again, from an IT standpoint, I have not had a chance to look at it. I had a lot of priorities. So I couldn't tell you if we can get into it from that side, but just in a, in a general sense.
I do think it's critical to, to look at. Lighting is one of the primary things that affects electricity and electricity is one of the largest bills that the library has. Also, we get complaints from the community that the lights are on at all hours and I have no way to adjust that.
I don't mean that it's not important. I meant, public safety things have been
I absolutely understand. I would just sort of for the record
Yep.
Making sure to state that, yeah.
I don't know if this would be more of a Brian question or an Abby question because it's post you for, because it's building stuff. Are any of the building, the, the project itself has not been 100% closed out?
No.
So is there any funding left in any of those accounts that could cover this?
The project itself, in terms of the appropriations, those have all been zeroed out.
Okay.
We're down to the very last, I think, special appropriations or special revenue funds to, to maybe cover a few costs, but all costs in general, other than this, and then we have a plumbing issue that we're working on, have been resolved. So we're, we're at the stages where we're getting ready to close the project out. I know we owe a report back to the Select Board and FinCom and Capital Planning about where the status of the project is. Abby, Dan, and Jake and I have been talking about trying to find a meeting time to get ready to do that presentation to you all. So we're down to those two projects. But I do think we can figure out at least this cost in-house.
Okay.
This is just a more complex system than we have in any other building. And so we've yet to be able to figure it out with existing resources.
Other questions? So I think from a capital standpoint, it's not on the capitalist, but we have it identified at least in some way. We'll probably get it in an expense budget somewhere else.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to re-enter the reading, if that's okay.
7:41. Recreation Commission and Parks. Do we have it? You can bring as many chairs as you want.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'll just go quickly over the highlights of our narrative. We had a pretty challenging year last year and one of our goals was to basically reorganize and divide the work up among the, we only have four members and our recreation assistant. We're still looking for somebody, if anybody's out there in DV land. So we have formed subcommittees, basically sports and athletic program, events, parks, grounds, and summer park. So Eric and I sit on the parks and the grounds. Renee is the sports and athletic. Events is Katie Sadler and myself. And summer park is Renee and Breda and Katie. and summer park is Renee and Breda and Katie. So, we have seen an increase overall in our participation in our events and our sports. Part of our issue with the declining enrollment is the fact that there aren't that many young children around, but there seems to be a nice increase with that. We had a fairly successful summer concert series, it was our second year, but our first, first full summer, and in spite of some weather challenges, it went pretty well, and we are gearing towards fiscal year twenty-five of increasing the advertising aspect of the fact that we have the summer concert series. We, our Fall Festival, in spite of the weather, again, was successful. We had a number of vendors, outside craft vendors sign up, and we had a number of social agencies and town departments participate. Altogether, it was probably three hundred people when the weather was nice, and then the heavens opened up, and that was the end of that. We did have a bonfire that we actually didn't get to burn until October for Halloween, but overall, it was fairly successful, except for maybe the beer, yeah. Yeah, we did. We took from our experiences with the twenty-four Fall Festival to do better with twenty-five. So every year, we learn, we take notes, we increase, a way to be more efficient, so. We had a really successful trunk retreat, we had a lot of community members participate and town departments. We did it in conjunction with the library, so they had an event going on, and they could do a little photo booth, and then they came over and they did the trunk retreat, and then they went on the reg check parade, and that was pretty successful. We had a great bagels and more with Santa, we had at least a hundred and fifty people, maybe a little bit more. There was a lot of families running around, so much that we had to set up more tables to accommodate that. There was coloring and stickers, they got their visit with Santa, we also gave away books, and there was cocoa and coffee and, and bagels. So, we got a lot of positive feedback from the community for that as well. Oh, the Easter egg hunt, we had, well, we had two thousand eggs, they were gone in five minutes, so it was very successful there. I don't think I forgot anything as far as the events were concerned. Summer Park was a bit challenging this year, we originally had, thought we'd have thirty children, the enrollment wasn't there, so we cut it down to twenty, but this was actually good, we, we had a new director, so it was great to kind of reshape the program a little bit. Our, our director, who's coming back again next year, is actually a paraprofessional.
She is, and so she also does the after-care program, and this year, at least, is, is teaching preschool as well in New Salem. And I will say that the, we capped it at twenty students during the summer program because of a late hire for the director, because she was a new director coming in, we, we hired a little bit later than usual, so people didn't register thinking, they didn't know who the, the director was gonna be. So with the late hire of her, people did start to register, but by then, we had to cap it because we had to hire counselors, and we have to stay within ratio of one counselor to ten children, so...
But the nice thing, it was a very successful program, and again, we really went over it at the end and learned what we could do better. We are, our goal, one of our goals is to achieve a fifty-fifty split on how much it costs us, because that is our largest program. And then grounds and parks, we've made some headway there. We had a playground specialist come and look at our Zelinski Park and give us some not great news, but not terrible news, that are, that particular playground has about three years before it will need to be replaced. We have met with, Eric's been trying to meet with the electrical over at the Franklin County Tech School to finish the Riverfront Park electrical, and you have a meeting set up next week? No, this week.
Yes, this week.
Wednesday, yes, Wednesday nine-thirty, yes.
Again, whether, we had an earlier one, but weather canceled that. We've been working on the Vets Park and basically going through all our parks and seeing what equipment we need to replace, and, you know, doing that sort of inventory, so that's pretty much what we've been doing this year, is reorganizing, really looking at... We have five parks, it's a lot for, for elected commissioners and one part-time recreation assistant. So, our goals and initiatives for the next year is, I've already talked about how summer park, we want to make it a fifty-fifty split, we're trying to really track the costs on that, we're trying to increase our participation with the sports program, for instructional players up to, well, basketball is the only one we do to sixth grade, baseball, the minor, the new guilt, well, minor league and the greenfield minor league, they really take the bulk of the kids coming in, so really, we're just at an instructional level, and soccer would be up to sixth grade if we had enough kids. Again, I talked about the summer concert series, where, you know, we're promoting that, we sent out little postcards, I'm sure everybody got the latest ones, they were trying to promote more of that, to make it a more multi-generational experience, and that's one thing I have to say, with the visit with Santa, there was aunts, uncles, grandparents, it was, it was awesome to see. And, and like I said, our biggest challenge is really taking care of our parks, they, they need some help. And that's, as far as our budget's concerned, unless you have any questions about the narrative. Our biggest drivers, well, we, what we did was, because they have the new software, we broke everything out. So, we want to be able to track our expenses a little bit better without having Breda spend hours trying to track down what we spent on certain events, so we really took advantage of the new software and broke everything out. So, we have a line item for ordinary expenses, we have a line item for summer park alone, programs, events and concerts, so in the future years, when we keep working this, we'll be able to find to where we are actually spending all the, the funds. So our biggest driver is in, basically, summer park. Our tent of many years bit the dust this year, and rather than invest in a new tent, we've decided to rent a tent for summer park. We really only need a tent for two events, the Fall Festival, which we did rent the tents this year for that, and for summer park. To have the highway set up the tent, then take down the tent, and then have the tent up at the school, it's a lot, and it's kind of a waste of man-hours, and so we figured we would try the rental route, whereas we rent the tent, they come set it up, if it breaks, they come fix it, and then they take it down in a timely manner, so...
And they, and they store it?
And they store, and they store it, because it is a big tent, so that is, that's probably one of our biggest drivers. The other one is the wages for summer park. For years, it was requested that the Recreation Commission adapt, follow the town wage schedule, which we did this past year. So consequently, the wages increased, and that was about the biggest, the biggest two drivers. Any questions?
I have a question about some of your programming, you say that like for the summer park, you're aiming for a fifty-fifty split?
Yes.
With our request for departments to look at ways to generate revenue, is there a reason why we're not aiming to have that program be self-sufficient?
Well, we did raise the summer park fee from...
Yeah, I saw that in the narrative.
It was seventy-five originally, and then it went up...
To a hundred and twenty-five, and we raised it to a hundred and fifty, that's for in-town, out-of-town would pay the two twenty-five. That is about the going rate for a summer park program in the area, is between one fifty and two hundred and twenty-five, and to be honest, that's a lot of money for a, a person to pay to have their child attend a summer park, and we didn't want to price it out. You had two kids, even at the hundred and twenty, hundred and fifty dollars a week, you have two children attending, that's three hundred dollars a week, you want them to attend all six weeks, that's eighteen hundred dollars. It's just a lot, so we were trying to figure out a way to do the fifty-fifty split for that. I don't, I can't speak for the other board members, but I really don't think we can realistically make the summer park program self-funding because we just don't have the volume, which is what you need when you want to have a program to be self-funding, you need to have a lot of people coming in, and we have a, a limit of thirty. It's a manageable program at thirty, and everyone gets individualized detention, any bigger than that, you have to increase the staff with the ratio of the one to ten, and...
The busing.
The busing, that's also...
Additional bus, which is a substantial portion of the cost for that program every week. In addition, the camps, the summer programs that are comparable to ours tend to be run by organizations that have year-round staff and year-round resources, where they offer these types of programs year-round, so they have the facilities already on-site, they have the amenities that they need, the resources, we don't, we bring it in per child, we try to purchase ahead of time for the number of, of kids that we have, and then run through it to, to that degree. We just don't have, we're not a year-round program that can draw on staffing or rely on additional supplies that we already have and can store somewhere, so...
And how are the other programs funded, just out of curiosity, like I, I got the postcard in the mail, and I noticed like on things like the Easter egg hunt and the Santa program, there's always the caveat of funded by the Irving taxpayers. So I'm just curious, is that not recreation using your funding to pay for those programs, is that, like, where...
Our funding comes from the Irving taxpayers.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that, so that's what we're saying.
But it's coming from that fund, it's not being, you're not asking for additional budget funding to run those programs.
No, so, we, we have a few free programs, right, that we don't charge any fee, the egg hunt is one of them, and... Halloween, the trunk retreat.
Santa and the coast.
Jackie, I don't want to cut you off, I know only have fifteen minutes, Breda answered my question.
Okay, Eric, no, it's fine. We just wanted to, people to understand that tax dollars are paying for it.
So you mentioned the tent and the tent rental versus purchasing?
Yes.
Was there an analysis done just to, like, what that payback would be, or do we...
I think the plan was that we would try it for a year and see how that panned out. Storing the tent long-term over the winter often is what leads to the problems that we have when it gets put up with rips and tears, molding, having to clean the tents and the time that's taken to need to do that, the condition of the poles, the condition of the ropes, all of that maintenance can be safety issues in the tents with improper storage or with...
Just the where, where to store.
The wear and tear, it's easier often to have the rental companies who maintain those and use them year-round for different events, they're the ones who deal with the insurance, who deal with the repair of things, replacing parts, as opposed to us, and then they can put it up and take it down in a timely manner. We rely on the Highway Department staff coming in, which sometimes happens on weekends. If they need to take down something from the school grounds, and they can only do it on a weekend to fit it into the schedule with the school, then that's overtime for them, and they're coming in to do extra work. So, with the rentals, they pop it up on a certain date, they take it away by a certain date, we don't have to deal with storing it. So we're comparing.
So we didn't, we didn't get an estimate on a new?
We did get an estimate on a new tent, it was three to four thousand dollars for a new tent. But there's, you know, the new, so we wanted a big-sized tent, I don't, do you recall much, we rented, we paid for the tent at the Fall Festival?
No, I'm sorry, I don't recall that.
We rented a good-sized tent at the Fall Festival, it wasn't a tremendous amount of money, because it's not making a big dent in my brain, all right, but it was reasonable, the tent of the size that we wanted usually run between four and six thousand dollars, which we did explore the possibility of purchasing a tent, but then again, we ran into the problem, where do we store it? Then you have to add in the man-hours to set up and take down, and the highway can't take it down if it's wet, so then you have to wait for a warm day, and then they're trying to do all their other, you know... Jobs, so this is, we decided we'd give it a try, and then we would see, but I, I do think it's just gonna be...
Just asking the cost analysis, that's all.
Yeah, no.
I get there's pros and cons.
We did the pros and cons analysis, not the cost analysis.
What is the cost for rental?
We have yet to, we have to cost out the rentals for this year, when, at the time that we were doing this, they don't have their next year's summers cost for rentals, so we were basing it on the rental, I think, for the, the Fall Festival, which was, was around a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, it wasn't terribly expensive, and actually, didn't you say you rented a tent at your...
And the school where I work during the days, we rent a tent for the months during the summer, and it's, I think it's less than a thousand dollars a month to rent, and the summer park's program is six weeks, and that's in the Amherst.
That is the six thousand line item is the rental, so six thousand is what you're budgeting for the tent rental?
Right.
For all events, because the way this reads, it makes it sound like it's only for the summer park?
The, the tent rental for the, for the Fall Festival is already embedded into the event line item, because we've already done, we've already accounted for that when we figured out how much it would be for the Fall Festival.
So, so the rental, if line item?
Right.
So if I'm seeing this right, if we went and bought a tent, four to six thousandish or so, we have, we have to maintain it, take it up, put it down, all that, and it's plus six thousandish or so, if somebody else does, all those worries and the insurance?
Yes, that was our thought to, attempted this year, was to see if it was cost-effective and, and to see, and, and the savings on the man-hours, which is really where I was looking at it, and the storage, because we don't have any place where you can store it, that it's not going to be exposed to rodents, or extreme cold, or extreme heat, or anything like that, and that's really what wears and tears on the tents.
I just ask from a financial point of view, because it's the Finance Committee, and financially, it seems reasonable to me, see how it works. I do have a question, not directly related to finance, but as part of the parks, do you maintain or mow around or rake leaves or anything, like for the veterans monuments at Vets Park or by the Town Hall, or is that something Harry Brown does or Highway?
It's part of the ground maintenance line item, which is under the recreation, but is maintained by Glenn and Brian.
And there's also a contract agency that we work with.
Slight, slight carve-out, the rest of the parks, which the monuments are attached, are, come out of the park maintenance, but the monuments are covered between some of the work that Harry does, but the Highway Department does the rest of that work, so they remolch every year and get them ready for the, for Memorial Day. So it's a bit of a combination.
One of the other things that we're doing this year also is we're breaking out the parcel.
Yeah, well, I was gonna talk about that.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, that would, that would actually move the monuments to a separate thing.
So we're already at time, so there's capital requests in here, too, we haven't talked about?
There is, there are two for fiscal year twenty-five. I'll take the Vets Field one, so we, we've requested money for, a request for qualifications for a feasibility study for Veterans Field. Part of that is, we want to redo Vets Field, but to do that, we want to get, we want to go after a park grant, which we've talked about previously, and, but we need a feasibility study to do that, it has to come first. And also, in conjunction with that, I've met with Glenn and Brian and Chief Wonka about surveying the Veterans Field, which has never been done, and breaking out the pieces that don't actually belong to the Recreation Commission as a park, because they're used for something else. The biggest thing, of course, is the fire station. And then the other part would be breaking out the monuments, so that they could be part of a town-owned parcel and not part of the recreational park, so that's the thing for the, the capital, our first year would be the forty thou, forty-five thousand dollars for the feasibility study. In our strategic planning, we detailed more what our goals were, and I believe Breda emailed that to you earlier. And then the other one is to take down the water tower at Riverfront Park, which has been on the radar for a while. We certainly don't want it, and I think that the space could be used better for a park, either parking or some sort of recreational... Either parking or some sort of recreational gar, you know, some gardens or things like that. And there's a liability issue too, but I mean.
I will say also with the feasibility study for Vets' Field, even if we don't move forward with a parks grant, we would need to have a feasibility study done anyway to see where the different amenities that we would put in could be located because of the water issues that are there, especially.
Oh, and I know we're over time, I don't want to, uh, so we've actually met with Glenn and we agreed at our last meeting. We've, um, the selectmen have to do their part, the select board has to do their part, but we have declared the tennis courts and the fencing over at the baseball is surplus, we like them removed. Highway is graciously agreed to do the fiscal part and we need to pay for the disposal if the select board agrees to declare it surplus and then that would give us a big open field. And the dugouts are going to be burned as a fire exercise with the fire department.
Just to be clear, you're talking about Veterans' Field for that?
Veterans' Field, did I, I did say Veterans', I'm sorry, Veterans' Field.
And the tennis court has to come out anyway for the road.
Yeah, for the subdivision.
A subdivision, so that, that needs to be put, come out anyway.
I'll be honest, I don't know why.
I don't know about yet.
Right. Well, I'm not sure.
So we're not going to solve them all right here, but I just want to focus on the capital ones right now because subdivisions and all these other things are different.
Yeah, no, that's just, it's all part of like the whole big picture is all of it, we're moving forward in steps towards getting a, you know, a, a park that we can design and move into the future with. Part of it's removing the old equipment and, um, but the very first step, although I don't, I'm not sure why they didn't do it in 1974, was clearly defined where the fire station is because it's mixed in with our rec land, which you're not supposed to do, so.
Questions on the capital portion?
Yes. So the capital planning committee did have some questions that were sent to you guys previously. I did get the chance to look at the multi-year plan that you guys resubmitted. It still wasn't very clear. It sounds like you want feasibility for FY '25, marching, matching park grants in FY '25.
No.
Okay.
No, no, um, and.
So one of the questions that we did ask was what is the ver, what is the exact timeline for Veterans' Field? Because it sounds like you guys want to do Veterans' Field, the water tower removal, a Zelinski Park upgrade, all at the same time.
The Zelinski Park upgrade was fiscal year '27. That was, um, the playground has a three-year lifespan left in it, so we'd bring it around fiscal year '27.
Can you, what makes it a three-year lifespan, like what?
The playground safety instructor told us we had three years left on it.
It's the inherent lifespan and the materials that are used. The plastic only has, the plastic components only have a 25-year lifespan. Some of them are already showing wear and damage. The metal components may last longer, but that would take digging down underneath and doing an, an analysis of that. Regardless, because of the age of the materials, we cannot get replacement items to replace the plastic components.
Okay.
So the whole thing would need to come out anyway to reinstall something different.
Because it looked like you were asking for money for Zelinski, I believe you actually put in an FY '26 request for Zelinski.
We did originally to put, to put in some, um, resurface and ADA compliant.
Okay, and then there's another one for FY '27.
Well, the FY '26, you said, we were declined on that one. So now we're just putting in some surfacing to make it safe for the next three years out of our, out of some funds that we already had.
Okay, I think there's a little confusion because the FY '26 request, I don't recall capital even discussing.
Let me just interrupt for one second. Bill, you are up and we are running late, do you mind waiting or would you, you sure?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, or we can come back to this after you if you prefer. All right, thank you, sorry, please continue.
Thank you, sorry, is it last year that we made the request?
Okay.
And it was not funded. We've never seen a budget line for it, so we withdrew that.
Okay.
And then submitted a placeholder. And we've been trying to figure out what to do with Zelinski ever since.
So then what is the timeline specifically for Vets' Field?
In an ideal world, we would have the feasibility study done in fiscal year '25. Um, and um, we would apply for the park grant in fiscal year '26. If I made the arrows because I was trying to figure out how to do the multi-year, um, you know, uh, capital expenditure new form again. So um, so then if we got the park grant in fiscal year '26, we would hope that we would start, um, construction in fiscal year '27. Um, but all of that is subject to funding and, um, you know, advertising and that sort of thing and who you would get and when they would start. But that would be in an ideal world, that's what we were thinking.
And some of the timeline issue is, is the deadlines for the parks grant does not align with the start of a fiscal year.
What is that deadline, is it July?
The, the park grants open in March and the deadline and the announcement, the deadline is in July and the announcements are made.
Oh, so September, October?
I'm going to say October. And they, and they expect the work to begin right then, so.
You get the rest of the fiscal year and then the second fiscal year to finish.
The confusion is that it said apply in March of '25, March of '25 is fiscal '25, not fiscal '26.
So, so we have application down for, if the feasibility study is done early enough, then we could put in our application in the spring of '25.
Without matching funds?
Well, we would need matching funds, that's the.
So you're in the wrong fiscal year.
So, so that's the earliest. But '26, we start in '27 and decisions in '27.
So I, I think the confusion from the capital standpoint is Breda that we're planning FY '25 right now.
Yeah.
So if you guys are saying we're going to go apply for a grant that may need matching funds in FY '25 and you're telling us we need zero dollars for that.
Yes.
Because we've got nothing, we have no way to plan for that.
So that's where, that's where.
Right, and.
We have our confusion.
We have, and, and, um, we're not very well versed in how to do a park grant that is part of where we would have a collaboration with a planner, with a town planner. Um, so if we get some of our deadlines wrong, we're, we're sorry, I mean, it's our intent to do the feasibility study. Then as soon as the feasibility study is done, apply for the park grant. If we get the park grant, I think that's when you have to come up with the matching funds to accept the park grant. But again, we have to look at it again because we don't have any knowledge or past history in how to work the park grant. We just know that there's a source of funding out there that this is the type of thing that they do. You can get, um, you know, a park, a new park and that would be the thing. So fiscal year '26, '27 type thing, we are working as hard as we can to go with, you know, we don't want it. We know we have a history of dawdling, we don't want to do that anymore. We want to be efficient with the time and to move forward, so we might have been a bit aggressive in that, but it's the intent to do it logically and apply when we can and then move forward with it after that.
Sure, which I completely understand and I appreciate, it's just for capital standpoint. That we have to plan for the entire town.
Yeah, and we're, we're sorry if it got muddled there.
With having, it looked that, you know, it, it could be read one of two ways. One of was feasibility FY '25, potential matching funds FY '25.
No.
So when you're talking of, of potential, what I assume is probably a million to $2 million project. If the town's matching funds are a million dollars, then that's, we have no way to plan for that if we're not getting that.
It would be 50 at most, that's our max.
Uh, the, the grants are only fi- 500,000, that's the, the maximum, that's the maximum for a park grant is 500,000.
And so the matching funds at the, or if we applied in 2025, they would be 2026. We did submit a placeholder for that, we just haven't, that was, we put this placeholder in last year, so I'm sorry if we needed to redo the placeholder for that.
Yeah, all requests that were not approved were in the, in the budget messages, there was no carryover, so everything had to be resubmitted. Anything had to be resubmitted.
And that's, that's.
That was my misunderstanding.
That's a confusing capital thing, which we are working to correct this year.
Yes, sorry.
You're not alone on that.
Sorry about that, we really just dealt with the immediate.
Yeah.
Couple of years, so.
And that, I think that was me not understanding that the placeholders weren't carried over.
Placeholders have become, we thought they were a good thing at the start, they have become very confusing. So we are working very diligently to attempt to come up with a better solution for them.
And, and we are working very diligently to be more transparent and to be more organized about our requests and wrapping our head around how to do it.
So the most, if I'm understanding this correctly, the most the town's match would be, would be 500, if you're going for a park grant.
If they were, if they were going to match, yes.
Yeah, okay.
If the project went over, then the town would have to bear the, the more expense. I think that the usher was 750,000, does that sound right, Linda? Yeah.
So reimbursement's up to 70%, depends, I think last time we got 58%.
Yeah, something like that, I.
It could be 1.2 maybe and we get 500, but you know, it'll depend on what the match percentage is and what the whole project is. If the project is one and a half, yeah, a million's the right number, if we're going to get a full match and we're going to do it. So like it really is how big is the project, minus up to 500.
Um, we did put in our strategic plan, what we planned to work, uh, what we wanted at Vets' Field based off of the town feedback back in 2020, um, so that is in the strategic plan.
I don't know, is capital done asking questions for now?
So even if you are going for the park grant, the intent is still to move forward with the water tower for FY '26. And then Zelinski is?
Zelinski would be fiscal year '27. We haven't quite decided if we want to replace it with playground equipment or if we want to do something different like an exercise station, which would appeal to more multi-generational people. We are exploring that possibility.
Okay.
So we also understand that if it had to sit for a year vacant after we remove the expired playground equipment, that, that's acceptable, not desirable, but acceptable to us because we understand it's a big expense.
That's just a whole lot of funding in three short years, that's, if you're talking a park redo plus Zelinski plus.
Yes, we, uh, we had a few years where things just got, we didn't take care of the parks like we should have, so, um, we are playing catch-up.
So it was feasibility this year, we don't know a number, probably a million plus. Request next year for matching for a grant, I, I, we don't know a number, but, but it's not cheap, I'm sure. And Riverfront wasn't as big in what was done and it was less, less than that, so. Not much less than that, but, and then also the water tower next year is currently the, the plan or the request plan?
Well, I, I'll be honest, the water tower is something that probably should have been taken down a few years ago and I'll hate to invoke COVID issues, but I think that we were going somewhere and then COVID hit and it lost its momentum. We have a really pretty park down there and a really ugly water tower. And if you're seeking to redevelop that other part of the part that the town owns of that park, the water tower just does not put off a good vibe. I mean, so we would like it taken down just because I think it doesn't do us any good to have it up, but if there's not the funding there, then there's not the funding, but the cost to take it down is only going to go higher as we wait.
And the cost to, to, um, is it remediate, to, to renovate it back up because of the materials that are involved? If you look at the analysis of materials that are in there, it, none of it's good. And it shouldn't be sledging into the ground anyway, especially where it's located. So the sooner you can get it out, the sooner you can stop the ground from getting even more contaminated.
I know it waited because they're looking at that too, wrapping it and remediating it and also because we're doing other parks, because we did.
Right, uh, it's just too expensive to.
Park Street Park and stuff, so, okay.
I, I understand it's a symbol and some people have an attachment to it.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just talking about how many financial things we can do, we did Park Street Park and that was delayed doing, you know, looking at what to do with it, so I think that's the challenge is deferred maintenance or not, there's only so much funding.
I, I was going to say, I, I do think it's going to have to come down if you're talking a major park grant, a complete redo up at Zelinski and the water tower, I do think it's, there might have to be a conversation amongst rec of what the true priorities are. That is a significant amount of funding, just knowing what other departments are requesting for capital over the couple, next couple of years. We have a whole roof and heating system and stuff to do next door. So I, I do, I just want to throw it out there that you may have to choose, do you want the water tower down or do you want a park? Just because of funding availability.
I, well, I mean, it would be the parks. Our Veterans' Field, it gets used now a lot and there's not much left there, right? The basketball court's always being used, the, the swings are being used, we use it for our Fall Festival. Um, a, a soccer team used it this year for it, because their, I think their soccer fields got flooded. It would be, it would be the Vets' Field.
Okay, and just back to Vets, you had said you're going to declare the tennis court surplus?
Yes, because it, we want to have it removed.
Okay, so that just seems weird that you have to actually declare it surplus, I get it.
That's the process.
And you said for the removal part, that may have to be trucked out, it might have to. Do you have any sense of that removal might end up being a capital expense?
Uh, no, it's 15 to $20,000, we have a quote, um, well, Glenn gave us an estimate. Uh, we have about that in our repair maintenance line item this year. If we, if it exceeds that or we have to dip into the repair maintenance line item, then we'll take it either out of the capital continuing appropriation that we started last year or we'll take it out of the revolving fund.
Okay, so you have that money within your budget?
We'll make it work within our budget.
Other capital questions? Okay, other rec questions in general, budget? Before we move on?
I just had a comment and then a question, that for some of us, it's sad to see history like the water tower go away, but it's not one of the pyramids, things don't last forever. Uh, and knowing the background of the dangerous materials, other than just some people don't like it, it's costly to leave it there and you have the liability, so balance that with the historical thing. But my, that was my comment, my question was back to the tent, if I could, how long have we had the tents or tents that we have roughly?
The tent predates me and it was even several years old when I started.
Predates me.
It predates you.
It was pretty old, it was, it was pretty unsightly, but this last time.
It was, so.
Well, I mean, the, the decision may have been already made, it's not my decision, but from a financial point of view, I asked the question, if it's going to be five, 6,000 bucks for you to rent a tent or if we buy one for five, 6,000, it lasts a long time. There is the issue of taking it up, taking it down, putting it up, storing it, all the things that are very valid things. But from a financial point of view, if you buy a tent for five or 6,000 in the last 10 years, um, it's a balance, you know, what do you want to do? Not my decision, but it's a comment.
Right, um, well, we're going to analyze, we're going to do the analysis this year. Also, we'll need to get with Glenn to figure out the man-hours for setting up the tent, taking it down and at the cost because that is an expense that we don't, it's not directly attributed to the Recreation Commission, but it is our expense. And so, um, that would balance that when we did the cost analysis. We just thought this year we would try renting it, there's kind of a surplus of tents around since everybody, a lot of people bought tents for COVID and, um, they are, you know.
Are they for sale? No.
Well, uh, maybe, but we really want it, um, somewhat, a lot of our decision was based off of the man-hours that required to set it up and take it down and if it gets, you know, broken, so.
Yeah, there is a lot of vandalism with the tent and we were doing it.
Well, but at least my perspective, we'll, next year we'll have both data points, so.
Yes.
Spend 6,000, use it for two years, is that cheaper than spending 6,000 every year if that's the real cost? So at least we can look at that next year more thoroughly, hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's okay, my poor time planning. Phil, come on up, thank you, thank you for being patient. Historical commission and Pro B Care Museum.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Philip Johnson, I haven't spoken before this, any of this group before.
Glad to see you here, thank you for coming.
Yeah. Have no idea what to expect or what you want from me, I'm ready.
Understood, I'm just scrolling here, give me a moment. Levity, yeah. The bar is minimum some levity, you know.
I'm good at that.
Excuse me, um. Excuse me. Um, generally just kinda talking through and I don't know if you have it in front of you, but we probably have it in the packet there. The narrative, you know, a little bit about highlights and challenges from this year and then talking about what's the goals for next year and then just running through the numbers.
Okay, um, yeah, this, uh, you probably haven't heard much from the Historic Commission in quite a while. We've been understaffed for a number of years and we're finally getting up. We're at six of the seven that we are allowed or, or should have. So we're, uh, we're gaining momentum and we're actually getting things done. You probably saw the, the narrative. I'll just give you quick highlights of that.
Please.
This past year, we've managed to, uh, do drafts of a demo deletion, demo, demolition delay bylaw and an archaeological accountability policy. They've both been reviewed by the town attorney and were, they are on their way to the select board for readings and approvals or comments back. Demo delay bylaw, basically many other towns have this so that no, uh, commercial project can go forth tearing down a historic building, whatever we determine that to be, without having the Historic Commission and others check in on it. Archaeological accountability basically is, um, are there ending burial grounds on your property? That sort of thing, you know, we're not trying with the demo delay, we're not trying to say you can't tear down your garage, it's gonna fall down. You know, that sort of thing. It's not a homeowner thing, it's more of a commercial development thing. We went, went through all that ourselves. We did manage this year to get grant, matching grant funding for a, a inventory of historical structures in Irving. And we're trying to find a contractor to do that for us and it's very difficult. Brian's been working with the, uh, State Commission to try to help us, you know, tweak our, our RFQ so we can actually get some bids and get that project done. Basically that allows us to designate historic districts such as the Irving side of Miller's Falls. Miller's Falls side has their own in Montague. We wanna mirror that on our side likewise in Farley and hopefully over into Irving Center. So we'd have three historic districts. This comes into play because, um, commercial development again can get different funding, different federal monies for rehabbing some of these properties, this sort of thing. It doesn't do a lot for the homeowner unless you wanna hang that plaque on the corner of your house. Yeah, we're, uh, we're watching some of the things, but this, this past year, um, we, uh, have, uh, acquired by the Pearl Care Building under our shelter because the historic society is gone. So there's no one watching that building whatsoever, so. The select board decided to assign it to the Historic Commission to at least be caretakers of the building and the collection for now, should there ever be a society formed in the future. That is, um, one of the reasons why we're actually asking for some money because that building needs a lot of help, as you can imagine. It's been pickled for three or four years anyway.
At least four.
Yeah, four, yeah. So, you know, it's been drained out of water, heat's been shut off, it's basically cold and dark. The electricity's been on, um, we've got minimal electric in there. You know, it, it's barely worth discussing, but you know, it's like $200 a year, so, but.
Do you mind if I just add to that real quick?
Yep.
So in your package, you'll see that there's a new budget that's never existed before specifically for the museum.
Right.
To date, these costs have been covered by town buildings.
Right.
And while that was appropriate for the time being, it does not allow us to track the individual cost for this facility. And so our proposal is if you all accept it, break that out as a separate cost center and then we can start building the historical information for this property.
Right.
So that's why you're seeing a brand new request.
Yeah, that's, that's basically why there's, uh, the, the two pages of budget stuff here. The Historic Commission, you know, we've had a $3,000 line item for several years and basically used practically zero. You know, what we've done has, hasn't cost any money. We did manage to, uh, we've got a computer somewhere waiting for us to start doing inventory of the properties that are in the, the care building right now. So we need to, we'll get moving on that and we'll at least know what's there. I, you know, we just wanna keep that $3,000 for the commission. Again, we may have to, some, uh, some small projects that don't take much. And like Brian said, the museum services is the other side of that page and has, um, basically it's a swag of 14 grand. We don't know what it's gonna be. We just put a line item in. Um, you know, if we, if we try to heat the building, it's gonna cost a fortune because it's uninsulated, it's still the old firehouses, we all know. The electric will go up with some kind of use, but we haven't done a full assessment of the building to see if we can even open it under ADA guidelines, you know, the doorways, the bathroom is a, is a one-seater, we'll call it, and it's in the basement, so it's not accessible. The second floor is not handicap accessible, so it's only the first floor. We had discussions with, uh, the town about the doorway itself, the width of the door, the threshold, this sort of thing for, for handicap access. And we're still in discussion on that, so we just don't know what we can do with the building to open it up to any sort of public. But, you know, we tried to put some money together to do some minor repairs that we saw. Maybe we'll just pay other town departments to do the patching of the ceiling where we've seen some ceiling damage. And, um, we even joked about having the sheriff department paint the building for us, that sort of thing.
Why not?
You know, all, all, all those little things. Um, that's about all I've got to present, I guess.
On the town building side of it, did we reduce that accordingly or not?
That's a question I was gonna.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we, so we, we used to fund some of this. I know this is more probably than we were, we were funding.
Yes.
But did we pull anything out of town buildings or no?
Not yet because the electric bill, to Phil's point, has been about $15 a month because it has been in a shuttered state. My recollection four plus years ago was that it was a couple hundred dollars a month when it was on. The heat, we have, we're about to do the asbestos payment work so we can fix the piping and turn the heat back on. To your point, it's not insulated, so I recall it being hundreds of dollars per month to heat the building.
So the answer is it wasn't actually funded.
So the answer is $200 maybe?
Yeah.
Right, so, so five plus years ago, all of those costs were truly held by town buildings. For the last four years, it's been very minimal. Turning it back on is likely gonna be thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
Questions, comments?
I have a general knowledge question.
Sure, go.
I just don't know, I always thought they were one in the same.
Yeah.
What is the difference between the Historical Commission and a Historical Society?
Okay, let, let me put this in real folksy terms. The Historic Commission is chartered by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts through each town and we do, um, we don't care about the, uh, the button hook or paperclip collection that someone donates. That's not ours. That belongs to the society. If you will, the society, I liken it to the DAR ladies. They're the ladies, old ladies with white gloves that sit and have tea on Sunday afternoon. You know, they care about the town, they remember each school teacher of each town, each area, that sort of thing. That's a historical society, just maintaining the culture and that sort of thing of a town. The Historic Commission, we're more concerned with the projects that we're working on is to, let's get a historic district developed. There's steps to do that, you know, and Sarah and I love this stuff. It's engineering stuff, A, B, C, D, E, done, you know? And, you know, make sure that we don't disturb any, um, uh, Native American artifacts or ceremonial grounds, you know, that sort of thing. That's a Historic Commission task.
And I think just to build on that, the society was a nonprofit.
Yeah.
So as a entity, when they decided to close, they gifted their collection to the town of Irving.
Five thousand button hooks.
So.
Some white gloves.
Do you want some? I know where they are. I have the key.
It's not wrong for a town, because we've wrestled with this question this year, should a town be running a museum?
Yep.
It's not wrong for a town to run a museum. Not every town has one.
Yeah.
So, so it's an option, you can do it.
Yep.
Is it a Historic Commission's charge to run a museum by statute? No.
We say no.
So, but it, but it's not wrong if that's the passion or that's the interest. So the other part of putting the budget the way we have, we've created an opportunity to keep them under the Historic Commission if that's what's desired. But maybe in the future, if there's a decision that those become two separate groups, the budget's already prepared in that manner. So it gives both options as we figure this out because it, it probably should've been addressed sooner than it is being addressed today.
Yeah, I, I met with someone from East Long Meadow last summer, uh, through another group, but he, uh, invited me to the open house at their museum. Their museum is run by the Historic Commission and they have a charter from the town that says this is how it shall be. So they're one in the same. That is allowed if the town decides to go that way. You know, so, you know, I, I can certainly get the, the bylaws and all that in a heartbeat, but you know, that's, well, it's probably posted somewhere. But, you know, that, that's a possibility also, but we haven't, as a Historic Commission, we haven't got our arms around this whole project yet to determine which way the sitting commission wants the, to, this to go or speak to the town folk about what they want us to do.
Okay.
You know, there's, like Brian said, there's two, three options that we could go to on, on this sort of project. But for now, the building is assigned to us and we're doing our best to come up to speed to, uh, maintain the building at least, keep it dry and cold.
Thank you.
I believe that kind of leads right into their capital request.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. We should go into that unless there's other questions on the rest of it. I'm finding a spot here, but go ahead.
So we did, Phil, you guys had done, um, Sarah had submitted it, the capital request for the 10,000.
Yep.
And capital had met last week and discussed it.
Yep.
And I believe we all felt this fell more under operating expenses and should be in a budget line item. Um, that way you have it annually as an annual appropriation. You can use it as you need. And from what Sarah had listed, repairs, cleaning, painting, those individual things probably would not fall. I mean, I could see maybe a repaint of the entire building might fall as a capital expense. But the rest of it probably would not.
Okay.
So we would support seeing a line item in the budget for this.
Okay, fair enough.
Now, in the draft operating budget, we put in 2,000 for maintenance services and 2,000 for maintenance supplies. And so that may be already working towards what you just described as a starting point?
Sure. And I guess I would also say, is there, and without having it in front of me and looking back, I don't know if there's capacity in town buildings? If it's a few thousand of more maintenance repair type stuff, which is generally what we are using that for.
Correct.
As opposed to
Yeah.
not necessarily being one single improvement project that is 10,000, but a bunch of, you know.
It's death by a thousand cuts over there.
Exactly. I was gonna say like all these different handyman things, but it's more than that, but still, you know, it's a lot of just basic kind of maintenance and upkeep and.
Yeah, there's, there's some plaster down on one ceiling, you know, we gotta look at the roof, but we gotta repair inside. It's, it's all buildings and ground stuff.
Okay.
So would you say, Phil, knowing that you guys had, put in that capital request for 10
Yep.
and you have between supplies and maintenance, 4,000 in the budget existing.
Sure.
Do you feel that 4,000 would be enough for this year or would you wanna increase those lines a bit?
I think we'd leave it alone for now.
Okay.
We just don't know and I hate to request extra. I know it just goes back to town anyway, but you know, wanna try to be frugal, we'll say, for the first year.
We appreciate that.
Great. Other questions? Might've been your first time up here, but I learned more than I knew about it before tonight, so thank you. A lot more. Appreciate it.
No extra charge for that. It's all about training you guys.
I'm glad to hear that we have more members and starting to move forward.
We still need one more, so if you know of anybody, point him at, at Brian as a vol, the volunteer coordinator to get on our board, so.
Will do.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you and thank you for your patience. Okay, and to wrap up, veteran services, ceremonial services.
My turn.
Your turn.
Okay.
Don't think you're a veteran, but I've seen you involved in some ceremonial stuff unnecessarily.
And we would request that you be as funny as Paula.
Oh, I could not, on my best day, I could not compete.
I'm gonna have to record this twice.
So, uh, uh, Veteran Services, uh, Budget Section 543 is mostly level funded. We had a slight increase in our Veteran Services appropriation to the Upper Pioneer Valley District. So that's the $600 increase this year. We do expect veterans' benefits to go up slightly more than they were last year. So I'm recommending that we stay at the $20,000 budget number that was sufficient for last year. And, uh, we, uh, it's called professional contracting services, but we had added in the Veterans Services banners, the Hometown Heroes Program. So that's what that money is used for. And so I would like to maintain that program going forward. It's been quite a positive thing for the community. I think we're getting a, a lot of joy out of that program. So it's a $600 increase over this past year.
Questions, concerns?
Done. Okay. And then moving back to ceremonial programs, that's predominantly Memorial Day, some seasonal decorations that we do mostly in the winter. And, um, all of the flags throughout town that line the streets or the, the town facilities, we're looking for a $1,000 increase and most of that is just for the cost of, uh, the flags that have increased. Predominantly a materials increase. For a while, it was a shipping cost. We couldn't, you couldn't obtain flags if you wanted them. Now the supply chain has gotten better, but we've seen that those material costs have remained higher. So I don't think we wanna decrease the number of flags we have in town, so, um, our request is a $1,000 increase to keep up with that.
So if I'm following, we purchase new and/or have to replace that many here, that much work every year?
For a while, we had a material that really only got us one, one season. So we were, we were replacing every flag. The material that we switched to last year, we actually had a much better experience with the, um, the UV resistance of the material and so it gave us longer than one season. The problem that we have was actually with the, uh, the pole hardware. It had a swivel feature to it and it was coming loose. So, um, trying to find the exact flag set match that works best has been our challenge. But we were getting more than one season out of the last pair. So, um, the appropriation will allow us to replace probably about three quarters of our supply. We always like to have some on the shelf in case there's a storm damage or something else that we don't have flags go missing.
Brian, can you speak to your little, your note about transitioning to a special article?
Uh, yes. So, uh, seasonal celebrations, that's the one that we've used for snowflakes or penguins or, uh, the, um, welcome to Irving banner program, things like that. Some years, we've spent all of that money and so for an operating budget, it, it was exactly what we needed. There's been other times where last year's investments were satisfactory for this year and we haven't needed to. And so that balance just falls back into free cash at the end of the year. So there was just a question about whether or not you all would want to maintain that practice or consider making it a special article. In the event that that money wasn't spent that year, the unspent balance would just retain from one fiscal year to the next. It's just a question. Um, I don't know that, I feel strongly one way or the other, um, but it was something worth proposing to you all. I know that there's been a few requests for some larger displays in town. $5,000 is not gonna be enough. But if there was an unspent balance for one year and then another $5,000 appropriated in a future year, that may allow a larger request to be considered.
What kind of?
Can you give us an example? Probably something that looks like a polar bear or something on this side of town.
Do we need to call Paula back? No.
This one's not coming from Paula. Um, no, there's, there's some more, uh, I think, there's a, I think, again, that's another thing that some people have had fun with in town, which is nice to see people have fun with things. And there, right now, most of the displays happen to be on the other side of town, the Irving Center. So there's been questions, what can we do on this side of town? Most of your buildings are on this side of town, but we have very few, no streetlights, uh, that you can mount something to. Everything's a utility pole on this side of town, which means permitting and licensing through the utility companies. So, but you own a lot of the grounds over here, so maybe there's a ground mounted display or something else that we would do on this side of town that we can't do on the other side of town. So that, that was more the, the conversation. And those things tend to cost 5,000 or more, so.
Yep, yep.
So Irving's version of Bright Nights. We're doing Bright Nights.
We need to save for a few years for that.
That would be fantastic.
Five dollar scar.
Yeah, perfect.
Absolutely.
That sounds like revenue generation to me.
It absolutely does.
Would need traffic detail and everything else if it gets that big, but hey.
You build it and they will come.
That's it.
You know, I've been using that reference lately, the whole field of dreams stuff.
I think recreation should sponsor a light pole decorating contest, like they do over in Orange. Right on the ones right out in front of Town Hall, all those, because the town owns those poles.
Just don't do it when it's windy or you might not have any more poles.
Yeah, yeah. We're working.
No, no, no more climbing then. No climbing the poles. Okay.
Unless you make yourself invisible.
Good question, we'll, we'll think about special article or not.
Yeah.
Other questions?
None.
No pole climbing funds, we're good.
Excellent.
All right, I think that wraps the FY25 budget review for tonight. I do want to talk about IPMEL in a second, but budget calendar before we do.
Yep.
Next up is the eleventh, and it's joint meeting, and I was looking at this the other day, and we don't actually have like a capital planning committee recommendations review. Formally listed from what I can tell, whereas we called out as part of operating discussion with every department, but then not a separate one, right? What's that?
Yep. You're right.
The eighteenth, right?
What?
And March eighteenth, Capital presents.
Where does it say that?
I should have just bolded it in blue, March, Monday, March eighteenth.
Joint meeting, FinCom, Capital, proposed capital and operating budget review and recommendation.
How is that different than March eleventh?
It's not.
FY25 Capital Operating Review and Recommendation.
It's on one of those days.
So, anyway, I was saying it not as a criticism, just as a, that's what three meetings in a row say. It isn't a specific recommendations night rather than an overall review night, or both, because it's probably both. Does Capital want to do that on the eleventh? We'll plan on that as the first part of our overall review is to make recommendations, or would you rather a different night? And that's all I was leaning toward asking. Because that is our next actual budget review meeting is the eleventh.
Well, on March seventh, we meet with the department heads to tell the department heads what we've approved and what we have not approved. So I would think we'd be ready to do that on the eleventh?
If not, we could always push it out to the eighteenth, we could always plan on the eleventh.
Well, we're going to talk budget one way or another, so we're ready, we'll start with Capital.
Yeah.
And then talk budget, and if we're not ready for Capital, we'll just talk budget overall.
Budget for everybody.
Yeah, all budget.
Ben, I just need an agenda for the seventh, but all the department heads know to be present.
That's happening at Town Hall?
No, it was on Town Hall because Capital was meeting that night. It's at the library.
Okay, okay, good.
That's why it's repeated three times in a row.
Yeah, be better, all right. Any?
FinCom, we were going to meet on Monday, March fourth, but we are not meeting on Monday, March fourth.
When are we meeting?
Is it rescheduled?
I will send you guys an email to see about rescheduling it.
Okay, and the next joint meeting is the eleventh, the eighteenth?
Yeah, eleventh.
Eleventh, eighteenth, twenty fifth, but on the eleventh, we'll figure out how much of that we need, hopefully. Do we have ATM article draft two?
I believe that we could have all of that ready for the eleventh.
Okay, well, if we don't, but it's in progress and we'll have that to look at too, because that will be part of all this.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Anything else on calendar? Okay, circling back to review of a discussion regarding former IPMEL RFP questions for addenda. So we have that out again. We had questions back, we have to issue an addenda. And one of the questions, and I know we don't have it in front of you, but is about whether or not we would be interested, willing to make parcel four dash zero dash thirty five part of the RFP. And that is the parcel that Paper Mill Road goes down the hill around. So it's where that little, like, single, maybe tractor trailer paved area is as you come down.
Sometime.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's that elevated, just right on, right on the little hairpin right there.
Is that this section that gentlemen?
Basically between the hill and between the.
From Wendell thought there was someone buried on?
Speculated, but further down, but in that general area, yes.
Yeah, not under the pavement.
The parcel goes basically from the intersection of Prospect, straight down the hill to where Paper Mill wraps around again. It's that whole piece that you drive around.
Yeah.
Roughly, and just from the parcel map to give you an idea of where it is.
And so this organization or?
One of the questions.
Is the question?
One of the contractors that asked, would be willing to add the, open that up as part of the project.
And we didn't think that, just before the joint meeting, we didn't recall any discussions of any use of that parcel that we've heard any about before for other things. So no reason from that standpoint, and I think maybe what you're going to ask was, what's, is, do we know what the driving request? What drives the request? No, okay, go ahead.
I was actually going to ask if the town had any reason that they would want to obtain that or keep that parcel, because.
No, that was, we didn't, we didn't know.
We didn't know, that's why we wanted to bring it to you, in case there was something else that you guys thought of, but I can't think of anything. Theorized use that we've come up with has been to support the river access that we're hoping to maintain a portion of and/or have a, maybe a conservation easement over the property afterwards, so people can get to the other forty acres in the back. Was the potential for a small parking area for, for the public to use. But the reality is, the road layout is so great down on Paper Mill Road.
Yeah.
Next to that pump station along the side of the river, we own all of that, and we have to keep a portion of that paved. That's where we have some stormwater structures. So we've already had early conversations with Glenn that we can just maintain that as on-street parking in that section. So if we needed, say, five parking spaces.
So you don't need a ton. And it's a long span, it's paved right now.
I, I was going to say.
You could do more than five.
It is a little confusing, is there a better way to delineate road from parking lot down there? Because it is a little confusing when you.
Little interesting, yeah. That, so the.
I was going to say, I didn't think there was.
There's no great way to see it right now, but if you.
Pretty cracked up pavement.
It's in poor condition, if you see the, there's a stormwater structure in the middle of what that parking lot looks like. That's the edge of your road layout, it's that wide.
It's huge.
But that shows you how much the parking from the mill had bled into the road layout. It was a different time and that was okay.
You're talking the new, where the fence, the nice fences around it, that where the town had gotten the grant and done all that, that structure.
Yeah, the road layout goes that far.
Wow, okay.
Does the road on this map, mapper, mass mapper actually delineate the size of the road paved surface currently? I mean, not the paved surface, the actual roadway?
Proximation, because that's being fed off of Jackie's parcel maps. So it's an approximation, it's not a, it's not a true survey in the field.
No, 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 I, I just mean the difference between the road and the bounds is like tenfold.
Yeah.
It's huge.
So part of that, and, and just for context, that road layout was laid out by the county commissioners. That's another one of those ones that if you all wanted to at some point, we could petition to take ownership of fully. We're responsible for the repair, maintenance and the improvements, but the layout belongs to the county commissioners.
So we don't get chapter ninety for it?
We do get chapter ninety because we take on the maintenance, but legally changing the bounds would have to be, they would have to abandon it and they would abandon it on the condition that town meeting adopted it.
So in all honesty, it makes sense that we should.
I.
Especially if we're talking about looking out, you know. There's no county, so let's.
Right.
Parcels on both sides of the road, it would make sense to have it under our care control and have the, the layout be proper.
And we've made it clear to whomever is interested in purchasing the property that an active part of that development would be to adhere to our bylaw on driveways and curb cuts and, and shrink that paved surface so that we have a true proper entrance to the property that the, the road is distinguished from and make sure that our stormwater actually flows exactly where it's supposed to, because it's not one large sheet, right?
So if that is something that needs to come before town meeting, is that something that can get done, to be done for annual?
That was one of the projects I think Mariah was talking to you about in her budget request for the surveying, to use some of that surveying money towards this project, which would be to create a petition to the county commissioners, and if approved, the exact same survey would work to go to town meeting.
Because it has to be, because we don't probably have good meets and bounds out there, is what you're getting at? So we have some, we have some scroll and we need to translate it into concrete.
Poplar Mountain Road and North Street, it's, they were all done around the same era, so it's the same style, Bridge Street.
To me, it just sounds like no matter what we do with that property, it's something that needs to get done. So if we can just get it moving and get it done for annual, then it's just checked off the list.
I don't know if we'll quite get it done for this annual.
I know, I know.
We may get it for you, we could probably get it for a special.
Want to add something?
Just that part of the road is actually surveyed back in nineteen fifty-eight, so it's not as bad as Poplar Mountain Road or as the other ones, because there was actually meets and bounds, whether or not they were actually identified. They did actually discontinue part of Paper Mill Road and then recontinue it, and we do have a survey from nineteen fifty-eight.
Okay.
There you go. Well, that's better.
Something to work with.
Better than what we have for the others, thank you.
I mean, if.
Were you adding something?
Oh, no, I thought we were going to redesign that road anyway.
We need to.
I mean, it's part of potentially a development use.
Right.
Yeah, I would think we'll, we'll need to. And I think the, and maybe you guys can see more if there's more about it, but one of the maybe reasons for the interest would be if there might be a rail spur potential. If there's need for rail access for whatever, maybe.
Right.
Because I'm assuming it would come down and be able to load cars right there and then go back up or something like that.
I, I am, I'm just going to pretend it's a business, a business can ask the rail to put in a.
Oh, yeah. We have silo deliveries.
Did not know that.
For a cost. Extremely expensive.
I mean, it's business though for them, you think about it, right? A rail company, if you want cars to come there, that's business for them down the road, so, you know, it's like development.
Day and age, it's not something I would think of if someone contacting the rail and saying, we'd like you to come through our, our driveway. That's, that's interesting.
First time we've been asked this particular question.
Okay.
We, we have a site where raw materials delivered by train cars loaded into a silo, they load it right off the rail cars, and keeps on going.
Yep.
Yep.
I mean, I would say it doesn't sound like the town has any plans for what they would use that parcel for.
You all don't have any thoughts either, otherwise I don't think we had any reason.
No, we didn't have any, we just wanted a bigger group to hash it out.
Financial standpoint, it sounds like it could be a gain if it was sold or, so.
It sounds like taxable property.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm.
If people are interested in or asking about that property, there's going to be a reason behind it.
Yeah, well, at least as we know, rails is, you know, could it be rail access is the, is the, the one that we know of, but who knows?
Yeah, it would be costly, like you'd build a bridge.
Well, maybe they.
I've never been building it.
It's on the other side for a little while, but I don't know how it'd get there. Yeah, no, I hear you, I don't know.
The spur would come off probably right after the, or just, just after the crossing of, by Prondackeys.
Come all the way along Prospect.
Come along Prospect, and that's where you would spur into there.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Potentially. Superb in the bridge, probably.
Sure.
Okay, so I mean, we don't have any concerns either, so yes, go ahead and.
Do you mind?
You want to vote?
Making a vote? It's okay to amend the, the addenda with that parcel?
Yep. And do we, we were talking about extending a date, so let's pick a date.
Yes.
A due date, because.
It was what, March?
No, 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 but for our own sake.
For our.
We just talked about budget calendar through the twenty-fifth, and then I think we had one more even beyond that, April fourth, maybe? So.
That's when I'm hoping you'll finish the budget and.
So do you want to do a week after that? And hopefully. So that's what I'm, wait a minute, that wasn't the fourth, was it the first?
April first was our goal.
Okay, so, I mean, we could have it due on April first?
Nice.
Only one that got that, okay.
I picked it up.
Um, you want to do April, so you want the fourth, and then we have it for Monday, the eighth? What do you usually do for a due date? It's not a Monday, it's usually a Thursday.
Usually do a Thursday, so you have some time Friday to.
Push it out to April fourth?
That's fine.
Make a motion that we change the submission deadline to April fourth, twenty twenty-four. And additionally, allow for inclusion of parcel four dash zero dash thirty-five if interested as part of the RFP. And issue said addenda.
Can do it tomorrow?
Tomorrow, two twenty-seven, twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else for joint business? I made it, you seconded it. It was just us voting, because it was just a, a board vote, yeah. No, it's fine.
Even just sitting here, it sounds different when that third person's out. Like, you're, you're waiting for that third voice to pipe up.
I know, it's, it's a little weird for us up here too, we're like, who's doing what? Okay, did I miss anything else in regular business before I? Okay, then I'm going to make a motion that we move into executive session, well, make a motion that we adjourn the joint meeting with Finance and Capital. Do that first.
Second.
At eight fifty-eight, and continue the select board meeting.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all.
Thank you all, have a great evening.
Yes, please. And from there, I'll make a motion that we move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I do declare, and a NEPBA one twenty-one, police unit, we will not return to regular business. Is there a second?
Second.
The roll call vote, Brian, will you call the roll? All in favor?
Selectman Bassarash?
Aye.
Chairman Smith?
Aye.
Thank you everyone, have a good evening.